Twenty twenty-two, we do have a couple council members who are joining us virtually, Councilman Hobart and Councilman Steinmeier. So we will go ahead and get started with our presentation. Our first is an overview of the By State Sustainable Reinvestment Corridor project, Mr. Say Manager.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Last week, at your regular meeting, the council had consideration of a resolution providing some financial support as part of what has been termed the By State Sustainable Corridor. The council asked us to bring forward more information regarding that initiative at your meeting last week. This evening, we are joined by Mr. Ron Acapul from the Mid-America Regional Council, who's been heading up this initiative for the region, and I'll be happy to turn it over to him for a further presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Weir and council members. Really appreciate the opportunity to share an overview of the By State Sustainable Reinvestment Corridor. This is something that we've been working on now for a few months with, under the leadership of Congressman Cleaver, mayors along the corridor and city staff, and just wanted to share the contours of the plan as well as a near-term funding opportunity that we're hoping to pursue together. So, this corridor is a twenty-five mile-long corridor that connects central Wyandotte County, Kansas, with downtown Independence, Missouri, and it's built on a lot of planning that's taken place in the region on public transportation. The spine of the corridor really focuses on the Missouri side, on Independence Avenue and the US-24 Highway. On the Kansas side, we're looking at State Avenue, Quindarrow, and a few other routes to connect the Legends area with downtowns. This corridor is really significant in that it does connect the downtowns of three major cities in the region, and it connects also a lot of neighborhoods along the route that are economically disadvantaged. That's what this figure shows here. The census tracts that are shaded in blue and in gold are ones that are either areas of persistent poverty or areas of historic transportation disadvantage, as the US Department of Transportation defines it. So it's an opportunity to connect underserved neighborhoods with major activity centers in an east-west corridor across both sides of state line in the region. From the federal perspective, I think this will be an attractive corridor project because it is by state, because it does connect a number of jurisdictions together. We've been working closely with the Area Transportation Authority, KCAT, along with Unified Government of Wyandotte County, City of Kansas City, Missouri, Jackson County, City of Sugar Creek, and City of Independence to develop the plan so far. The theory of change about this corridor is that we really have a moment with the new federal infrastructure bill that's just been recently passed. This is a historic amount of federal funding for transportation and infrastructure, and hopefully other funding may be passed by Congress as well. This is a corridor that has a lot of planning history in it. Mark has, in fact, funded several plans in the corridor in Independence. This is an opportunity to secure some funding, to advance some of the ideas that the communities have developed along the corridor. And we also see this as a potential model by focusing on not just transportation but housing, broadband access, green infrastructure. This is something that we would like to see implemented in other corridors around the region, and we think it may be attractive to the federal government as well as a national model. This is a relatively recent concept of marrying the State Avenue and Independence Avenue corridors together, and it's likely to evolve. It's already evolved since we've been talking with the folks to develop the plan so far. It will require extensive community engagement to really refine the plan and implement it. We do believe that this will provide a magnet for other federal funds to come to the region, come to the corridor, and also to other parts of the cities and other parts that are off the corridor. We have a similar model that Congressman Cleaver helped advance in the 2009 timeframe and the Great Recession with the Green Impact Zone in Kansas City. That drew about $200 million to the region, not just in the one core neighborhood east of the Country Club Plaza, but throughout the region. And as I've said before, we are looking at this as an opportunity to advance kind of integrated multimodal planning in the region. So I'll just walk through some of the key elements of the corridor as we see it right now. This will evolve over time, but this is what we've identified so far. We're very focused on zero-emission transportation. This is an opportunity to advance public transit and also do it in a way that's even more environmentally sustainable than we've seen in the past. The ATA has recently begun acquiring electric buses, and so we're interested in advancing that, along with connections to bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure along the corridor and opportunities to adjust traffic signal equipment and signal timing along the corridor and make the corridor more ADA accessible. There are a number of federal programs in the infrastructure law that'll be available to assist in this regard. There's an early one that I'll talk about in more detail later, the RACE grant opportunity, but there are a number of larger programs that could also help fund capital needs along the corridor. We are interested in opportunities to advance affordable housing or attainable housing along the corridor. There aren't a lot of those in the current infrastructure bill, but we are looking to Congress to continue to provide some federal funding for housing, but we do believe it's important to plan for housing along with transportation along the corridor, so we'll be looking at that. Broadband access, there are funds in the bipartisan infrastructure law for both fiber connections as well as digital inclusion. We know the state of Missouri is looking at the ARPA funding right now. We'll be taking applications for those funds. The infrastructure funding, we understand they will be developing plans for that later in the year as well. In terms of green infrastructure, we're interested in both renewable power generation and electric vehicle charging along the corridor, but also opportunities to provide trees and stormwater best management practices along the corridor as well. And there'll be opportunities to integrate those into some of the other grant requests, but there are also programs for smart grid and energy efficiency that'll be available along the corridor. We're interested in using this as an opportunity to promote workforce development in the region and along the corridor. A really simple example of this is that the ATA needs mechanics that know how to service electric buses, but we look at opportunities beyond that with the community colleges and other workforce development organizations. We've been in touch with emergency managers and police along the corridor. There are opportunities here to upgrade both public safety and security. Some of the ideas for that are license plate readers, expanding the network of closed-circuit TV cameras to kind of monitor the corridor, technology that Kansas City, Missouri has implemented called ShotSpotter is one that we may consider, looking at opportunities to embed that in other proposals. And the near-term proposals that we're funding opportunities that we're looking at right now include the RACE grant program, which is a longstanding program administered at the US Department of Transportation. This is a program that's evolved over time. I spoke about the Green Impact Zone in the 2009 timeframe. Back then, this program was called Tiger. It's been called Build. It's called RACE under the Biden administration, and it's available to fund both planning and capital improvements for transportation projects that range between $5 and $25 million. Applications are due this week. We've been working hard on pulling that together, and we're looking at a project that will focus on planning in three phases along the corridor. The first phase would really draw in the transportation elements along with the other elements that I talked about. The second one would start to really focus then on the transit, bicycle, sidewalk, and traffic signal infrastructure that I mentioned. And Phase Three would be really intended to design the transit infrastructure to about a 15% to 30% design to prepare it for a larger capital grant request in the future. Timeframe for this, the applications are due this week on Thursday. We understand the US DOT intends to announce awards for that in August, and so we would be prepared to begin work. It takes a few months to negotiate a funding agreement with the federal government and with the project partners as well, but be ready to go early in 2023 with the initial planning work and be completed by the spring of 2025. We're estimating a $7 million budget for all three phases of the planning work. Five point six of that, five point six million of that would come from the RACE program, and the remainder would come from partners along the corridor to participate in the non-federal match that's required as part of the grant. We're also working with the ATA on another request for more electric buses and bus upgrades, zero-emission buses through what the Federal Transit Administration calls the No-Lo Grant Program. Those applications are due very soon as well, and we've been in conversation with the Department of Economic Development in Missouri on their broadband funding process. So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions about the project that we're working on, the grant that we're looking at this week, and where we may be headed.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Are there comments or questions from the council?
Mayor?
Yes.
Thank you, Ron, for giving us some information on how to digest this. So with the grant and the planning, so the next steps would be build-out. So how do we compete for those fundings if we are awarded the grant and able to have these conceptual designs?
So, one of the programs that I mentioned earlier that we would be looking at is called the Mega Program. Actually, DOT has announced a call for applications for that program. They're due in May. We're not prepared to pursue that this year, but that would be an example of one of the types of funding programs that would be available for that. This program will fund projects between $100 million and $500 million. It's a large program. There's also another program that's not new that we've pursued in the region for a couple of projects. The Kansas City Streetcar has used this. The ATA has used it on their Prospect Max program. It's called the Capital Improvement Grant Program, and it's one that, by completing this planning work, we'd be positioned to compete for with the Federal Transit Administration.
Is that grant pretty safe? Safe being giving changes in administration and White House, that that will be there and be established there to transfer no matter who's in administration?
So, both of these are authorized through fiscal year 2026 with the current infrastructure law. The Capital Improvement Grant Program is one that has been around for decades. It's not a new program. The Mega Program is a newer one. Congress would need to reauthorize all of these in 2026, but they have a track record of doing those. Generally, once a program is created, they don't tend to end them.
That's a true statement there.
Anything else? Anything from our council members online? I can't see you, so if you're wanting to be recognized, okay. All right, thank you. This is exciting. I know we're at the very beginning of what is going to be a very expansive, multi-year project, but certainly holds a lot of promise for Independence and our entire region, so we'll keep track of it. Thank you very much. Mr. Say Manager, I understand we want to take the agenda out of order and move on to item number three, is that correct?
Yes, if we could take number three as our next item.
Okay. So that is the presentation of Independence Economic Development Tools, Mr. Say Manager.
Yes, again, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. We've had several projects in recent months come forward to the council involving economic incentives, and certainly a large one that's coming forward to the council in just a short period of time regarding proposed development in the Little Blue Valley. In light of that, we thought it would be helpful for both the council and the community to have just a short refresher on some of these economic incentive tools, how they're utilized, and what that means for the community. So joining us tonight is the city's Bond Counsel of Record, David Martin, with the law firm of Gilmore Bell, to give us that overview.
Good evening. David Martin, as you mentioned, with Gilmore and Bell, serves as Bond Counsel and Economic Development Counsel to the city, and I'm here to give a high-level overview of economic development tools that the city has found most popular over the years and are the most commonly used today, and would be happy to answer questions at the end of the presentation, or if you have a question, feel free to interrupt me at any point. We're going to discuss five economic development tools tonight, and the best way to look at them is to divide them in your mind into what they achieve in three different categories. And so the first one, TIF, or Tax Increment Financing, is a tax reallocation tool. It does not create taxes or abate them. It simply takes taxes that would have been used for a different purpose and uses them to fund a project under certain circumstances. The next two are CID and TDD, which stand for Community Improvement District and Transportation Development District. These are new political subdivision entities that are formed for the purpose of adding an additional tax, so we refer to those as tax addition. And then the final two are Chapter 100 and Chapter 353, and this is tax abatement. So we have tax reallocation, tax addition, and tax abatement, the last of which eliminates taxes that would have otherwise applied to a certain project. So tax increment financing, the potential incentive is to take a increment that is created by a project and increase in tax value that's created by greater assessed valuation or greater economic sales tax activities within a certain area, and apply those increased revenues to pay for the project or a portion of the project. So the way TIF functions is it focuses on capturing those increased revenues in excess of a base that's set at the time of the authorization of the tax increment financing by the city. The revenues can be captured for a total of 23 years after what we refer to as activation or project authorization by city council. And TIF has a greater application of its revenues than most of these other tools, at least the tax addition tools, in that it can fund both public and private components of a project. It's not limited to just public costs. So, the basic nuts and bolts of it, in order to apply TIF within an area, you have to first make a blight finding, and so you're going to look at the existence of a few different factors. It's been cut down recently by the state legislature, but what's left is essentially unsanitary or dangerous conditions or dilapidated improvements that exist on the property, deteriorated existing improvements. Once you make a blight finding, the effective use of TIF is to freeze that property tax base at the current value. So you have a blighted area, it's got a reduced value. You freeze that by authorizing a project, and then, as the project's constructed, it increases that tax valuation. That increment, the difference between the frozen value and the increased value, is what's captured then, and those tax revenues are usable for the project costs. Sales tax are similar. You freeze a base for the economic activities, the sales within your redevelopment area in the year prior to your authorization, and then that increment, again, is what's captured, except with sales tax, you can only capture 50%. The other 50% goes to the taxing jurisdictions as it would if TIF didn't exist, and that's also what happens to the base. So the concept with TIF is that you do not reduce the base, so the taxing jurisdictions are not getting less at any point than what they received prior to the project. So Community Improvement District, the first of our tax addition options, is a separate political subdivision, or in some circumstances, a corporation, but a corporation has more limited powers. It can only implement one of the revenue generators. And CID can fund any public improvement, or with a blight finding, with the same blight test as we just discussed for TIF, can also, to a certain extent, fund private improvements. So its powers are more limited than a city's are with TIF. It can only fund demolition, reconstruction, rehabilitation-type costs. You can't just fund a completely new project using CID on the private side. On the public side, it does not have to be a demolition. There does not have to be a blight finding. You can fund any public project. So the revenue generators, and these are going to be largely the same for CID and TDD, are a sales tax of up to 1%, special assessments, or a property tax. And I say "or," you can use a combination of any or all of those tools with respect to any individual CID. CID does have the ability to issue its own bonds as a tax-exempt bond issuer under the proper circumstances. It has a limit of 20 years duration of those bonds, and the bonds are fundable if the CID issues or if another entity such as an IDA or the city issues on its behalf from the revenues collected that are imposed by those vehicles that we discussed on the prior page. Transportation Development District, as I mentioned, has some similarities to CID. It is a separate political subdivision, again, with its own governing body. It has similar tools that can be imposed as revenue generators, so it has a sales tax, again, special assessments, property tax. It also has the ability to authorize tolls or user fees as a means to raise funds. It is, however, limited to just public projects and to just transportation-related public projects, so its project authority is more limited than CID. Similar to CID, it can be the issuer of its own bonds and debt obligations. It has a 40-year duration on its obligations, and it has the same concept of those obligations are payable specifically from the particular revenue vehicles that are chosen for that So now we move on to tax abatement, elimination of existing taxes to support a project. The first two types of tools are either taking money, reallocating money from existing taxes, and paying those funds under an agreement, under TIF, to a developer to reimburse certain project costs, or actually raising money and, in similar fashion, typically paying to a developer for either public or private costs. Sometimes, city-undertaken projects are funded in that manner as well. But either way, you're raising funds under each of the options we've discussed so far. So this is the flip side of that. This is eliminating taxes that would have otherwise applied to a project, so the developer is receiving the benefit over time and not having to pay those amounts. And Chapter 100 is the most expansive and flexible when it comes to tax abatement tools. You can basically de-force things on the abatement side. You can abate 0% to 100% of the real property tax that would have been applicable to the project. You can do the same thing with respect to personal property and equipment. And then you have two options with respect to sales tax. So the sales tax on construction materials or Stecom certificates, as you might have heard of them, that can be granted on any real property project in conjunction with or in lieu of the property tax abatement, and that's at the city's discretion. And then there's another component of sales tax exemption on equipment, which can be granted by the city but subject to Department of Economic Development approving it. So you have to go through a procedure, application procedure with DED before you can grant that. The basics of how Chapter 100 works, it relies on municipal ownership of whatever property it is that's subject to the abatement. So if it's a new warehouse, the land under that warehouse and the building will be owned by the city during the abatement period, which takes it off the tax rolls. Then you'll issue Chapter 100 bonds, which helps to validate the existence of the abatement, and there will be an agreement for the payments in lieu of taxes, which are the payments that the company is making that reduce the abatement. So, by nature of municipal ownership, you have 100% tax abatement. It's simply not taxable. So if you want to have a 50% tax abatement, then you require a payment in lieu of tax equal to 50% of what those taxes would have been. Importantly, on Chapter 100, we do not normally use Chapter 100 to finance, to actually provide debt financing for the project. It is simply being used to, and when the city has used it in the past and what's being proposed for the North Point project, it is being used only to provide one or more of those abatement tools. So the bonds are actually purchased by the developer and are payable by and to the developer. We call it buy-your-own-bonds. The city has no liability. There's no circumstance in which the city would be asked to make a bond payment, so it is not a circumstance in which the city is taking on debt responsibility on behalf of the developer. 353 is a tool that provides a portion of the Chapter 100 abatement vehicles. It just uses a different mechanism to get there. So it does not rely on municipal ownership. It relies on the channeling of the property through what's called an urban redevelopment corporation. So it has a different abatement scheme. It's set out by statute. So Chapter 100, you get the option as the city to determine what the abatement level is going to be, and up to 25 years, how long that abatement's going to last. There are statutory maximums for 353, so during the first 10-year period, not to exceed 10 years, the maximum is essentially the value of the improvement. So the base is frozen at the pre-existing value of the land, and then everything above that is abated. For a second period, not to exceed 15 years, there's a 50/50. So you forget about the base freezing portion. You look at the true value of the land and the improvements, and the amount that is required to be paid is 50% of that. So that's the statutory maximum. You can also agree, as was done recently in the Cargo Largo project, to reduce that below the statutory maximum, whether it be by virtue of time or an additional pilot payment that reduces the overall effect of the abatement. It does require a blight finding. It has the same. So, this past August, law was passed that homogenized all of the blight definitions throughout the various statutes that we use in economic development. And so currently, 353 has a same blight requirement as does TIF, which actually made it easier to implement 353 because there was previously a requirement of a finding of social liability, which is no longer required when they condensed that to having the same definition as TIF. So the redevelopment corporation is typically formed by the developer. It acts simply as a conduit to receive title to the property, which triggers the 353 abatement. It's then typically, within a matter of minutes, conveyed back to a developer entity, so long as that developer entity complies with the original requirements of the plan for 353 redevelopment, they receive the abatement on an ongoing basis. So there's a couple important things to consider with respect to the use of these tools that are unique to Independence, or at least that Independence would not be subject to were it not for its own efforts in becoming a good neighbor and partner with its other taxing jurisdictions, and the city has done two things to that end. One, it has established the Economic Development Incentives Commission a number of years ago. I think it's about three years ago now, and this is actually unique to the City of Independence. None of my other municipal clients in Missouri have taken this route, but it really, it brings in a voice for the other taxing jurisdictions at a point where they do not normally have a voice in this process. And so, it basically mimics a TIF commission in terms of the makeup, and it brings in members of the city, the county, school district, and then an at-large member for the, quote, "other taxing jurisdictions" that covers everybody that's not mentioned in those first three. And the way the EDIC works for the city is they hold hearings prior to city council receiving the formal presentation, the first read at council, and they make a recommendation, positive or negative, on whether they think council should approve the application that's been made by the developer. And they review all of the incentives that I discussed tonight, except for TIF. The reason being, the TIF commission basically does that same job with the same parties for tax increment financing. So then the second item is the city's own economic development policy, and this has been used to impose some limitations on what's otherwise achievable through these different incentives. I mean, the city has to, on its own behalf and on behalf of its other taxing jurisdictions, consider the idea that endless abatement and production of new taxes for these projects, at some point, there's diminishing return, and at some point, you could have gotten that project for less public involvement than was granted. So, the economic development policy sets some limitations, probably the most important of which is the 20% of overall project cost, which means no matter what the mix of incentives are requested by the developer, they're going to be added together and compared to the total project cost, and to the extent that they exceed 20% of those project costs, there's going to have to be some special circumstances promoted by the developer for consideration of that application. It also importantly prevents the city from taking on new projects where the city provides backing for the bonds. So the city has done this in the past on a number of economic development projects. The policy specifically states that the city will not consider projects where that is a request. The project revenues, the revenue vehicles that are created by these incentives have to be sufficient to make the bond payments without the city making any annual appropriations for that purpose. And then finally, it encourages projects that provide new value to the taxing jurisdictions right away, so day-one value in excess of the base value that was already there. And it does this in two ways. One, with respect to tax abatement transactions. It focuses on projects that have at least 15% of It focuses on projects that have at least fifteen percent of the tax not abated, so fifteen percent pilot that's going to those taxing jurisdictions. And then also with respect to TIF specifically, does basically the same thing, but it's different terminology. So in TIF, it's called surplus, where you take pilots that are quote, "unnecessary" for the repayment of the project costs, and you can set the amount that that is in your redevelopment agreement or your TIF plan. And so the policy says that fifty percent of those incremental revenues need to go to the taxing jurisdictions from day one, as opposed to making the taxing jurisdictions, especially the school district, wait twenty-three years before they see any benefit from those pilot payments. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there comments or questions from the council?
Thank you, Mayor. David, thank you. I know you've worked with us on several different projects and things, and most recently, working with CID in the first district. I see you have a CID or NID would work with one of the neighborhoods, so I appreciate your efforts there. With the Chapter one hundred bonds that you were talking about, when the city will take or ownership of the property, is that a safeguard for the city in case something goes awry in the future with whatever development, the city would still own and possess that property to use as it sees fits?
So it's really not a safeguard for the city. It is only done that way because that is the mechanism to take the property off the tax rolls. So in any of these circumstances with Chapter one hundred, the private entity has the ability to get the property back for essentially a nominal amount at any point and then at the end of the tax abatement. The thinking being that what you really would prefer would be to get the project and to be able to tax the project. So the private entity will be very reluctant to collapse the Chapter one hundred abatement scheme because it's going to lose out on quite a bit of abatement over that period. So the ownership by the city is only meant to affect the removal of that property from the tax rolls.
So we would have no legal claim to that if something was to go defunct or arrive?
So the only circumstance in which you would use encumbrance of that property against the developer would be if the developer was failing to make a payment to the city. So when you take ownership of a property, there's always some risks that come in connection with that. There's environmental risks. There's risks with respect to injury that could happen to a person on the property that would then sue the property owner. And so our documents require that those risks are taken by indemnity by the developer and also that they provide insurance to cover the city against those risks. So if there was a circumstance where the developer needed to indemnify the city for a loss for which the city was being sued or held responsible, and they were failing to do that, then the city could refuse to return that property on the basis that the payments required under the lease had not been made. So you could use it as a threat to say, "You're not fulfilling your duties to make these payments to us." But when, when it's all said and done, at the end of the either project or failed project, whatever it turns out to be, if you don't have that sort of indemnity requirement, the developer's going to be able to get that property back for basically paying the current pilot payments that are due to the city and then paying to have the transaction terminated.
You said that way more eloquently than I was thinking.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt if you wanted to.
No, no, no. I was just going to ask if there was anybody online who wanted to speak, so can we put them on the screen so we can see? You can go ahead, Councilman Hobart.
Thank you very much. David, so there's a lot of people out, a lot of independents folks that are concerned about economic incentives for any number of reasons, but the primary one is the Bass Pro TIF, which the city, which hasn't been a successful tip for the city. Is there any way you can explain the economic incentives that North Point is seeking? As if I'm a five-year-old, there's a, there's a thing on Reddit, "Explain it like I'm five." Can you, can you simplify it even more for me and for other folks that aren't quite as familiar with economic development?
Sure. And I'm guessing that really the crux of the question is explain why that's different than Bass Pro?
Well, can I, can I, if I, if you don't mind, Councilman Hobart?
Sure.
We, the council has not yet seen what is to come before the council to vote on regarding North Point. I mean, we certainly, the planning commission happened, the incentive commission meeting happened. So maybe we should back up for just a moment, Mr. City Manager, since we, this is coming forward for our first reading next week. Can you give us a sneak peek at what is, because I know it's been evolving somewhat, and I don't want to put you on the spot or have you say something that's not, that's not ready for, to be, you know, not finalized, to be brought forward publicly. Specifically, I mean, so I'd be interested in just communicating to the public what they, what is being sought on the North Point project. One of the speakers who was here last week, at least one of the speakers who was here last week, to speak on this project referenced a TIF, but there is no TIF with this project, if I understand it correctly.
You're correct, Mayor. What has been proposed as we sit here tonight and recommended for approval by the EDIC that Mr. Martin referenced is the Chapter one hundred bond tax deferment. North Point, part of the reason that this project was continued and didn't have its first reading last week was one of the issues that has been raised in the multiple public meetings that North Point has had with the community is the public infrastructure that needs to be constructed and/or improved in order to accommodate this project. North Point is now considering and I believe working to bring forward a creation of a community improvement district, which would capture the sales tax from that site and invest in that public infrastructure. That would need to go back to the EDIC and then come to the council. So that's not in front of your nose as we sit here tonight, but that's an important component that is coming. I will mention this and then ask Mr. Martin to elaborate as necessary, but as was, you mentioned and referenced last week, tax increment financing is not a part of this project. This is not a project where the city has financial skin in the game like the Falls of Cracker, Cracker Net Creek project, where we, as the city, used our full faith and credit to communicate to the bond market and investors that we would pay any debt service shortfall to make sure they were made whole on their investment. That does not exist here. Whether that project fully develops or not, our taxpayers are not on the hook for backing any kind of bonds or payments associated with this development.
Okay. So Mr. Martin, that said and understanding, as we sit here today, the only incentive that is being sought is the Chapter one hundred industrial bond tax abatement. Is that correct? And then potentially, potentially in some future time, a creation of a CID, which, you know, would have to be defined in that area. But back to Councilman Hobart's question, and Mr. Walker has stated it, but from your standpoint, why, what is the risk to the city and why is this different from past unsuccessful TIF projects, whether it's the Falls of Cracker Net Creek or other TIF projects that have not, you know, that have not been particularly successful?
So the difference is that in the reference TIF projects, some of the revenue vehicles that I described in this presentation were created. Those revenue vehicles were collected under a financing agreement signed by the city, where the city pledged to do two things. One, transfer those revenues to the bond trustee to make payments on the bonds. And then two, if those revenues were not sufficient to make payments on the bonds, to annually appropriate revenues from the city's general fund to make those payments. And that's not what North Point is requesting. So North Point is requesting...
Mr. Martin, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I really am. I apologize. So we're clear. Very simply put, Bass Pro was a TIF, is a TIF, in which the city promised to make good on the debt payment.
That's correct.
Is that, is that, okay. So that's correct. In, in the event, in the times that the income from the Bass Pro TIF wasn't enough to make the bond payment, that's when the city had to make those payments out of the general fund.
That's correct.
And you're about ready to tell us how North Point works, so whether we have one or not, but that's, that's exactly what I'd like to know. Is that going to happen? As, as we sit here today?
What North Point is requesting is tax abatement under Chapter one hundred. So they are not requesting that any bonds be issued to actually finance their project. So there's no borrowing that's occurring that needs to be paid back that is issued by the city. So the city is not in a position where any party would ask the city to make a debt service payment. North Point will have its own financing and equity that will actually pay for that project, and the city will be completely separate in terms of, they won't be signing any of those documents and will not be on the line for any shortfalls.
That's exactly what was ultimately the, the point of my original question, and I sure appreciate that. So let me ask you one follow-up to that. Again, this is very rudimentary for you, and I apologize for that. The abatement that they've asked for is, and a CID has been mentioned, is that it so far? Is that it for the economic incentives, this, this tax abatement? And then the CID?
That, that is correct. So North Point's model is to use tax abatement as opposed to trying to actually generate funds at the beginning of the project to pay for a portion of the project. So they are willing and they have the financial wherewithal and the financing to just complete the project and then rely on recoupment of costs through tax abatement and then through the CID. So the CID in this circumstance, as is being proposed, also would not provide upfront funding. It would provide what we call pay-as-you-go funding, which means revenues that are actually produced over time will be paid to the entities that incur the cost of the project, of the public portions of the project in this circumstance, which would include the city and also North Point, over time. And so there, it is impossible to have, excuse me, debt service shortfall in that circumstance. If the revenues generated are insufficient, the parties entitled to reimbursement simply don't get reimbursement as fast or in the amounts they expected.
In other words, my understanding would be that if North Point builds a bunch of warehouses and nobody moves in and they don't rent any of the buildings and they're all empty and they owe money to people they borrowed from or whatever to build these buildings, the city is not on the hook to pay off their debt?
That's correct.
I appreciate you being patient with me. Thank you. Those are the questions I had.
Are there other comments or questions from the council? I just wanted to take a minute and just again, really kind of congratulate this council on some very good decisions over the past few years regarding economic development. And Mr. Martin referenced them, but I think they bear shining a little bit of light on. The creation of the Economic Development Incentives Commission was done to create an additional layer of transparency of projects that are not TIFs. We haven't done a new TIF project in this city in over a decade. We've amended two TIF projects in the last ten years, if I remember. One is the marketplace on Nolan Road, which we amended that TIF to be able to demolish the American Inn and open up that corner for redevelopment. The other was the Burlington Coat Factory, where the Burlington Coat Factory is, because it was slow to get going, so we had to add some time to that TIF to allow them to make that successful, which it is. So we haven't initiated a TIF project in well over a decade. But what that created, because we were doing more Chapter one hundred type things and CIDs and NIDs and other economic development tools, that ultimately, we would come up here and say, "Well, what does the school district think? What does the county think? What does the library think?" And we never really knew. So, you know, we created this commission. The TIF commission is required by state statute. This is unique to independents. It gives the public another opportunity to come and participate in a public hearing. And it surprisingly met with quite a bit of resistance, but ultimately, we were able to get that passed, and we've been working in Jefferson City to make this statutory. As these other economic development tools are being used across the state, it seems like a missed opportunity not to require this in other cities. And secondarily, when something that was mentioned is our economic development policy, which we worked very closely with our Economic Development Council to create, and again, it was done to be crystal clear about if you do this, you're eligible for that. And I think that it's really professionalized the way we do economic development in the city. And again, you know, I want to say congratulations to this council who, who approved those two policies and brought really a tremendous amount of more public engagement to these processes. So it's exciting to see, you know, these things working together. We'll see, you know, obviously, there's some big decisions ahead, but, you know, I think that we've done a fine job of making our way through the process. Anything else for Mr. Martin? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So moving back to item number two, the mowing policy. Mr. Walker?
Yes. Again, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. A few months ago, city staff presented to you a plan to address citywide mowing, which had been somewhat disjointed and spread over multiple city departments. Obviously, that would make that prone to error, neglect, and just really not the wisest and most efficient use of city resources. We have worked over the last few months since we presented this to you to come up with a plan for consolidation of those services, as well as a cycle we believe will address our resources in an efficient manner. So this evening, our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Director, Morris Heide, is going to share the outcome of that work with you and the plan that we will be implementing.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, as Mr. Walker mentioned, I am Morris Heide, Director of Parks, Recreation and Tourism, and will be speaking tonight about our draft mowing policy. As Mr. Walker mentioned, this has kind of been an evolving process. If the council recalls, last July, I gave a presentation at the end of July regarding the transition that was taking place, shifting the grounds maintenance, mowing, landscaping, those kind of components from municipal services, or a good majority of what municipal services, those areas that they maintain, to the Parks and Recreation Department. And in return, they were going to take over some of the hardscape maintenance for our department. So that took place in July. As we worked through the late summer, early fall, making that transition, we realized that there were some process improvement and efficiencies we could probably experience. To my knowledge, there has never been a formal mowing policy ever established. So we got to work trying to draft something up that not, will not only help staff, but also help the citizens, the community kind of understand what the expectations are regarding what we foresee as far as mowing and grounds maintenance throughout the city. And lastly, this is kind of in conjunction, this process, with also updating our GIS maps in conjunction with technology... GIS maps, uh, in conjunction with Technology Services Department. They have been, uh, vital in assisting us in actually mapping out these areas. Just a few years ago, we were literally, you know, paper lists and paper maps and, and memory and type thing, as, or other departments were using that methodology. I was part of that when I was in Public Works Department. And so getting that, that, uh, the mapping, um, rendered on a map that's, uh, we're able to use and also conjunction with the City Works, Work Order System is really going to, uh, improve the efficiency for our program. So those are just some background information, things that I wanted to share. If you recall from the Independence for All Strategic Plan, 2017 through 2021, two main goals that this kind of, I believe, helps to, uh, fulfill, uh, being financially, excuse me, sustainable, we're seeking to optimize our resources, the limited resources that we have in our Parks, Recreation and Tourism Department, and also that quality of life factor, uh, really focusing in on improving the visual appearance and also improving public infrastructure and facilities. So diving right into the proposed mowing policy, which should have been, hopefully you all had a chance to look at the, uh, the attached draft policy, which was included with the packet. Two main goals that we're, uh, we're kind of defining, and those have to relate to really spelling out or defining what areas that will be mowed within the right-of-way and on designated city-owned property. And secondly, providing the appropriate level of mowing during each growing season. Uh, so right-of-way mowing is really perceived as we're assisting the landowners in certain areas, uh, and I'll go through the kind of the categories that we, we feel are appropriate. So we're really assisting, as with the city-owned property, the city is responsible for mowing and maintaining our city-owned property, and the, the property owners are tasked with maintaining their own property. So really, this is, this is perceived as being assisting, uh, those folks in certain circumstances. So this really doesn't remove the obligation for property owners to mow and maintain their property, uh, as stated in the Property Maintenance Code. So, but again, wanting to spell out for everyone what, what our designated areas and mowing, mowing and frequency is. So when we talk about mowing level of service, we've defined that as four different levels, A, B, C, and D, uh, as you can see on the screen there. So mowing frequency, A, that's our most frequent, uh, that's typically a seven to ten-day cycle, so approximately twenty-one to thirty times per growing season. Level B is fourteen, every fourteen to twenty-one days, so ten to fifteen times per growing season on average. And when I say growing season or mowing season, that's typically April first, we just started mowing about ten, ten, eleven days ago, to the end of October, so about a thirty-week period, that's what I'm referring to. Uh, Level C, the mowing frequency is every twenty-one to twenty-eight days, so seven to ten times, and then Level D is the least repetitive, that's every six to eight weeks or three to five times per growing season. And I wanted to just kind of put in scale, uh, given what we've currently been mowing, when you took over mowing from Municipal Services and added that to what we already are mow, we have about eight hundred acres of parks, uh, areas that we currently obviously maintain in the Parks, Recreation, Tourism Department. Combined, uh, if you look at the, um, the high side of these frequencies and given our current list, which again, we're going to go through and, and look at updating those, but given the current list of areas that we mow, uh, we're roughly mowing about twenty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-two acres per year. And I thought about, how can I kind of quantify that? A lot of people don't understand acres, or that's kind of, you know, um, an area that's hard to kind of comprehend. That basically is about the equivalent of sixteen, over sixteen thousand football fields that we're mowing per season. So over, uh, a thirty-week period, that's about five hundred and forty-five football fields per week, or about a hundred football fields per day. That's actually what we're out mowing between the right-of-way and, and the parks areas. So kind of puts some scale to the, the mowing level that we have. So when we think about-
Mr. Heidey?
Oh, yes. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, this is Dan Holbar online. How much can one person mow every day?
Uh, well, we have about twenty-one staff on average that are mowing, so, um, I don't know exactly how mu- again, it depends on the, you know, the mowing equipment-
Impressive.
-and the area that they're mowing, but, um, that's, that's kind of the average that we're, we're actually mowing that currently, so.
All right, thank you. Sorry for interrupting you.
Oh, no, no problem. So our mowing categories, we've divided this into six areas. So the first would be city-owned property, obviously we're tasked with, with mowing that area, and this would only include, this, this poly- real, policy really relates to areas that we have taken over at this time. Other departments are still, uh, mowing certain areas within the city. Uh, those are conversations perhaps for another day, but this, this really relates to areas that we currently, uh, mow in our department. Uh, rural right-of-way, so this is areas that are zoned residential agricultural or in active agricultural use. Designated right-of-way mowing, this is mowing on designated arterials. A good example of this would be, uh, say Little Blue Parkway or Jackson Drive, areas where there was, um, previously no, uh, city street. The city came in, acquired that property, fee simple, in other words, we, we purchased the, the land to build this, the road, the arterial. And so because of that, we are the underlying property owner, so we have to mow and maintain our property, similar to MODO property, they actually own all of their state right-of-way, and so they have to, to, uh, mow and maintain their right-of-way. So that would be a couple examples of designated right-of-way. On the same token, excess right-of-way mowing, this is, uh, areas acquired for future planned project, project, so, uh, you know, a planned use down the road for a future road expansion. A good example of this would be Truman Road in Van Maely, uh, future Jackson Drive extension, there's just kind of a, a strip of land when Peregrine Valley was platted that is for future use that would be mowed. City-created barriers, these are city improvements, uh, that created barriers to mowing to a landowner, that seems a little extreme. A good example, um, Councilmember Perkins, you talked to me last summer about Winter Road, where the old trolley line used to be. Obviously, the ground was, um, changed years and years ago when the trolley line was in, some property owners back up to some very steep grades, so that would be a good example. There, Winter Road, Ralston, Hardy Ash, kind of that area. And then lastly, uh, special circumstances, so this is mowing, uh, of other agencies' right-of-way to reduce blight or improve visual appearance, so back to the strategic plan. This would be areas that we would voluntarily decide, um, you know, in the best interest of the community, perhaps, uh, we want to take on some mowing responsibilities. It may not be all the time, it may be, you know, a couple times or a few instances, given certain circumstances. One example might be land trust property that, uh, you know, is currently overgrown that we would want to, just again, for the public good, to reduce blight. So with the draft mowing policy that has been presented, uh, we will, if, if this meets with approval, we will be going through the process of looking at our current lists, um, updating those lists, making sure that everything that we mow, as we go through the spring, summer and fall, begins to, um, fit within the categories and the frequency that we have listed out here. So this won't necessarily be an overnight process, it's kind of be, going to be a process that we'll work through. But our hope is that by the end of this growing season, uh, we will have gone through this and have, um, you know, mowing, mowing lists and maps that are up to date that meet with this policy and provide, uh, those city services that we would like to provide, so. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Comments or questions from the council?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, I'm on a roll this evening. Every speaker's got a question or comment from me. Thank you for the trolley line, that made such a big difference, not only the visual appearance of the connectivity there from, when you connect it up eventually to Truman, from Truman Road into Inglewood, but just the safety aspect in, of that walkability of, of just feeling safer, you don't have to worry about what's in the bushes or anything like that. So big, big difference and big change, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. City Manager, I know our departments never like to complain or whine that they don't have what they need to get the job done, they just get it done. Do we have enough equipment and personnel to maintain this schedule?
We have enough, uh, equipment. In my discussions with Mr. Heidey, now, we need to be better planning for adequate replacement of that equipment. Personnel is a challenge. Many times, uh, these are entry-level positions, so hiring in for those is difficult, uh, as well as retaining them. I, I don't begrudge this outcome, but a real outcome that happens is many times people hire into Public Works or Parks, Recreation and Tourism, and then they're looking for the opportunity to jump to better-paying jobs in one of the city's three utilities. So Parks and Rec and Municipal Services are often the training ground for many of our city employees who then, um, transfer, promote into positions in the utilities.
And we know the snow all falls at the same time, the grass all springs up at the same time, the weeds all spring up, uh, overnight on the same day, and you're already behind on day one, right?
Correct.
So how, um, I mean, I know every single spring, we just ask people, just be patient, we're getting to it, but we can't be at every A location on the same day, correct? So, I mean, I just think it would be helpful, not tonight, but at some time, to sort of understand, you know, there's, there's a beginning, I mean, somebody's going to be, some area's going to be first, then some area's going to be next, and then it's going to take some time for us to really get into that rotation that, uh, Mr. Heidey described. What about private property mowing? Whether that's abatement for code enforcement, is that handled through the same, um, through the same channel, or we, I mean, how much of that do we do ourselves? How much do we contract out? Is one question. The second question or observation is, I'm acutely aware that we have property owners in the city who would just as soon pay us to do it for them, I mean, quite honestly. And we spend a lot of the, you know, taxpayers' resources in notifying them, following up, sending them a letter, so on and so forth, when we really do know ultimately in the end that we're going to mow it and send them the bill and they're going to pay the bill. Is, I know I've discussed this with, with the city manager, is there a agreement that we could initiate with these known property owners, just saying, hey, just contract with us to do your mowing, because we know you're, you're really not going to do it, you would just as soon have us do it? And bypass a lot of the red tape that we're required to go through? So those are two.
You want to speak to the abatement issue?
Well, I was just going to respond and say, in the past, uh, typically, we haven't done a lot of abatement mowing, because again, our hands are pretty well full, just, you know, covering the bases of the, the areas that we need to mow. I think there have been a few instances over the last few years where either contractor wasn't available, or whatever circumstances, where we have assisted, uh, Mr. Scannell and Community Development to, to mow some certain properties. But really, our resources are pretty well taxed, the limit-
Right. So that won't interfere with, oh my gosh, now we have to go do a bunch of abatement mowing, so now we're off schedule on doing what we're, that's a separate law.
Yeah, typically, we, you know, we might be able to squeeze in a few situations here and there, but on a, on an ongoing role, typically, uh, and I don't want to speak for the city manager, Mr. Scannell, typically, I believe that's a contractor that Community Development hires to, to abate those areas, so.
And, um, Mr. Walker did a really interesting, um, job shadowing one day with our streets crews, and when you go out to mow and you have to remove illegal dumping, you have to, um, you know, get vehicles removed, whatever the case may be, how much does that impact your efficiency? Even, I mean, in our parks and the, the stuff that you're responsible for?
Yes, to your point, Mayor, even, uh, the right-of-way, our parks, our crews, we, we, um, advise them repeatedly, it's much easier to pick up several pieces of trash than to pick up hundreds of pieces of trash after you mowed over it, so, but there is that, you know, right-of-way areas, unfortunately, people are, you know, littering debris in the roadway that they have to stop and pick up ahead of time, even in our park system, you know, folks not properly disposing of things, so it, it's just time that, uh, we have to factor in, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Drum roll, next, body cam program implementation. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, uh, again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, good evening. This is a presentation that was requested by the council following discussion of the resolution last week that I believe was introduced by Councilmember Stewart, but often, um, my discussions with each of you as council members has, uh, come up in, in our topics of conversation. Uh, so we were asked to provide a little bit more information about the cost and benefit of this, this technology, uh, some of the known expenses, as well as some of the hidden, uh, true cost of, of ownership of this. So, uh, as we continue to deliberate, um, bringing this important technology into, uh, our business practice, we just want to make sure we provide the policymakers with all of that information. Uh, and here to do that is Acting Chief of Police, Adam Dustman.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council, uh, interim Chief of Police, Adam Dustman, as Mr. Walker said. And though not as riveting probably as Mr. Martin's presentation on economic development tools, or Mr. Heidey's mowing policy, I will try to get through what I can here for body cams for your viewing pleasure. So, uh, first off is just building on the follow-up from last week's meeting, um, you know, we talked about the partial implementation of a hundred cameras or the full implementation of two hundred cameras. Uh, for comparison's sake, tonight, after I went back and looked at the bids on the, on the quick turnaround, we're going to use a hundred cameras, uh, just because those are the bids that we have, just to give you numbers. But understand that that is, all of these are estimates, as we are rapidly looking into this program, uh, and the many, many, uh, factors and facets that are involved in it. Uh, so as I present to you tonight, I just wanted to keep that in mind for comparison's sake, we're gonna, we're gonna focus in on that hundred cameras. So, uh, again, the first factor to implementation would be that with a hundred cameras, obviously we have two hundred and thirty sworn personnel, uh, so that would require a checkout system. There would have to be some sort of a bank of, of cameras, as well as docking stations or other mechanisms for download that we will get into in a little bit, and, and there would have to be some method to charge those and, and keep those docked up and check them out. The second factor for implementation would be policy. Obviously, this is, uh, kind of feeds everything, not only on compliance for us and enforcement as far as when we record and what we record, but also, uh, it determines how much storage that's needed and the battery life of the device. As we go through these, typically, the, the two vendors that we've had have provided about, um, eight to ten hours of pretty standard use. Obviously, we have officers that work twelve-hour shifts, so that's going to require, uh, some sort of a hookup to a charging device mid-shift, uh, just to keep that topped off, to make sure that the device stays charged for the life of the officer's shift. Next, uh, expectations in public education, both of these are very important. As body cameras become more prevalent in communities around the country, uh, this part isn't, isn't so much of a heavy lift on us, um, but you will remember back when CSI came out and the CSI effect that we talk about today, everyone expects that the footage that you see from body cameras that show up on the evening news a lot of times, or on TV shows, um, that are specific to body camera footage, a lot of those are specific incidents that are cherry-picked for those instances, um, and often ones that are taken in news stories that are on the fly. You see the, the footage and the gyration of, of officers running, or combat that's there with, with suspects that fight officers. So just, there needs to be an expectation that the footage is not going to be movie quality footage, obviously, that you, you would expect to see from a production value. The two most demanded areas for footage, as you can imagine, are both uses of force, uh, where, where our officers are forced to, to use force against a suspect, or in apprehensions. Most of the mounts that we are finding, um, although there are a wide variety of platforms, whether it be glasses or Epilett, um, but most of them are some sort of center-mass mounted device. And, um, so as you can imagine, most of our uses of force are very close-quarter combat, which you get a lot of blurred footage of clothes, you know, clothing and body parts and things like that in close quarters, as well as apprehensions. If you think about a center-mounted camera, when you run, you're going to have it pointed mainly at the ground, and if you're going to get grass, and maybe if you're in shape enough, you might get the suspect's feet in front of you until you get close enough to, to close that distance. So again, those are parts of public education that we need to go through and, and, uh, as we look to implement any sort of a program. So now the big things that we were talking about last week is the cost. I broke this down into three areas, again, using a hundred cameras for comparison. The first is equipment, the next will be storage, and then staffing. I did get a chance while I was preparing this to see a lot of the citizen commentary, um, and so just for a point of, of clarification, this is not, the cost that I was giving last week to you is not just a go online to Google and order a hundred cameras and that's it. There's a lot more that goes into that, so that's what I'm trying to bring forward tonight so that you can kind of see the full, um, impact of a program like this. So we have looked at currently potential vendors, Axon- So we have looked at currently potential vendors, Axon, we've requested a demo from them, Digital Ally, we have a demo scheduled on the 13th of April here this week, Motorola, we have a demo scheduled on the 27th of April, Panasonic, we have an actual demo scheduled as of today on the 5th of May, and Provision, who's another provider, we have not heard back from them yet, Safe Fleet, which is the, they bought out L3, they're the current provider for our in-car audio and video platform that we have in the cars right now, that also are attached to the BodyWorn microphones that we have. We have a demo requested, but also, I will show you the previous quote that we obtained through them when we were first looking at this program. And then BodyWorn, we completed that demo here the 21st of March, so we'll reference those numbers as well. So Safe Fleet, again, L3, our, our current in-car audio and video provider, it is a docking-download method, so it is via access points that are at the specific police buildings, whether it be special ops or headquarters. The cost for 100 cameras in a five-year contract, which we will own versus leasing them, which is an important point, that cost is $326,190. That also provides, specific to that agreement and that vendor, a new camera replacement for every one of those 100 cameras at months 24 and 48, so it keeps the, the new generation and the equipment up to date. It also includes all of the vehicle and building equipment that we would need to have that platform operational, and then also the digital evidence software, which we actually already have for our L3 audio and video, so there'll be a comparable, a comparable or compatible digital evidence software. The BodyWorn demo that we had is a Wi-Fi download method, it's done via the in-car modem, there's a, a modem that's placed in the vehicle, or it can also be done via cellular technology through a SIM card, an internal SIM card. So it is downloaded wirelessly, real-time. Again, the, the cost goes up, they are leased, they are not owned, the cost of that five-year contract is $550,000. It includes all the vehicle equipment, all the digital evidence software for redactions. There are several options, a lot of these are à la carte, no matter what vendor you go with, holster sensors, officer-down sensors, if an officer ends up getting knocked down on their back, or they're rendered unconscious, and, and the body camera can sense that they are in that position, it sends an alert after so much time, and dispatch will get an alert, they can turn that camera on and see that the officer is facing the sky and send help, oftentimes before somebody could call for help necessarily. This also includes unlimited cloud storage, which again, we will, we will get into, but with every benefit, there's a, a trade-off, and this one is, I talked about the different intellectual patents last week, a lot of these vendors all have their own proprietary patents on these, on their equipment, at least initially. This one is worn inside of the uniform, so all you have is a grommet that is out there that actually protects the lens itself, the rest of the device, which is about as big as a cellular telephone, fits inside the shirt of the, the uniform shirt of the officer. And so they will retrofit all of our uniforms and jackets, five free per camera leased, and after that, it's $13 per additional shirt, and then jackets and heavier coats and clothing is more. Obviously, if we do 100 cameras, we're gonna have a lot more shirts that we're gonna have to pay for to retrofit via checkout system, so something to consider there as far as an additional cost. So then we go to storage. Technology Services, again, we, we obtained an estimate through them, all rough estimates, a lot of unknowns, based on policy, and initially, we were thinking we would store here internally for 30 days, that allows us to actually retrieve those videos here internally for case preparation for prosecuting attorneys, internal review for internal affairs and professional standards complaints, and then anything else we might need to be able to, to look at those videos for here for 30 days. After that, it would get shipped to be archived on a cloud-based service, and, and then that would be an additional cost, depending on which company we go with, and then whether or not they have cloud-based services included in that contract. So the initial four-node, 1080p server to, which is a 240 terabytes server, 190 of which is usable, is $132,133.23. That is a one-time cost, obviously, to expand that if we needed additional storage, or we found that we were recording more video than what the server could hold, that cost would go up to expand that storage space. And then the initial cost to run the fiber to our police buildings is about $10,000. So additional monthly storage space, again, based on rough estimates, and after speaking with Technology Services even tonight, we think that this may go down, this cost, it's just gonna depend on, on, again, how much storage space we need and, and what kind of video capacity we have. If, if we were gonna do this all-in-house internally, it could be as much as $10,000 a month, or $120,000 annually, just to, to not do this via the cloud, but to do it our own cloud-based internal storage. So then the big piece is staffing, and what people don't realize, much more cumbersome than the actual equipment itself, is the people that need to go through. So again, if, if, you can imagine, if I'm recording here on a call for service, and I'm recording, as I hit the microphone, sorry, if I'm recording the council as it is here, and that's the call for service, that is a matter of public record. Every time I get out of my car, or I move, and the, the lens moves with me, everything else, whether that's children playing over here, license plates that are over here that are not involved, all of that has to be redacted, that is not a matter of public record, that can't be released to the public. There is significant updates in technology and software that can go through and, and redact, otherwise blur out those images and follow that along, but it still takes a human intervention to be able to say, because we don't know that if I'm, if I'm recording all of you, that one of you wouldn't move over to this frame, and thus still be a matter of public record, whereas everything else that's over there right now is not. So it does take that intervention, and so that is a big, big time. Right now, even with the technology that's out there, the BodyWorn vendor said, usually on average, the average video that you would record on a call is gonna take 20 to 30 minutes per video of scrub time of a human on the back end to be able to redact that. So again, the staffing element that I have asked for as a matter of this program would be three. The first would be, and I, I've done this in two options, the first would be a fleet technician. Again, all of these are gonna come with some sort of a vehicle component, whether it be the Safe Fleet that has a parallel system to our in-car video now, or the BodyWorn system that has the, the equipment in the trunk, that also is gonna have to have a docking station, probably multiple for two-man cars. Those are all going to have to be maintained, as well as the actual data management system itself, and so all of that will have to be maintained, and we don't currently have the staffing to be able to do that. So that's one fleet technician, the other would be two police officers. My idea for that would be that we would expand our current PIO position to a media unit, they would take all of the open records requests, as well as take care of all the redactions, and, and all of that entire process. So that would be one option, which again, for this next fiscal year would be total, and I'll go through this, again, just for the public's benefit, that's not just salary, that's salary and benefits for all those positions, $315,768.93 this next fiscal year. Option number two would be the same fleet technician, one police officer, and then one police department IT specialist, again, along the data and the technology side, would be there to, to service the, any internet troubleshooting, storage technology troubleshooting that we may have, is, is just another idea. So again, as you can see, the costs are, are built in with the marginal increases for 23-24 budget, but again, the fleet tech of $80,599.88, up from there, and then the two police officers, $235,169.05 for this next budget year, again, that is salary and benefits to go through. And then option two, again, the same fleet tech, and then a police officer would be one difference there, and then a IT position for the police department, there's their cost for salary and benefits. So again, for that 100-camera cost with a checkout system, you're looking at $326,190 to $550,000 for the equipment, is a five-year cost, storage, one time, is $142,133.23, with increases there potentially for storage space on a monthly basis, depending on how we administer that, and then staffing, $278.784, all the way up to $315.768, which gives you a grand total of $747,107 to $1,700, $7,902. There is the, the Department of Justice grant that we talked about, but it is a max, it's a 50% matching grant for a max of 2,000 per device, which for those 100 cameras is only a $200,000 match, leaving us still on the hook for $547,107 to $807,902.16 with the two vendors that we have met thus far. Councilman Huff mentioned last week about the public-private partnership, about getting donations, again, great idea, but much like we talked about, we're gonna have to have a plan for, for future sustainability, that's, that's the big, the big push in this, is once we roll this out, as I mentioned last week, we cannot, you know, feasibly roll it back. So not that we can't, I should say, but that, you know, the public's going to expect, as they should, that we would continue to maintain this program. And so all of those storage space and things like that are going to come up as recurring costs, so what do we do after this grant, which is intended to be one-time seed money to get this program off the ground, where's that financial sustainability long-term? So with that, again, Councilman Hobart, hopefully that was rudimentary enough that a five-year-old could understand, I think my five-year-old's more technologically savvy than I am, but I will take any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments or questions from the council? Yes.
On the first list you had of the vendors, was WatchGuard video, video on there?
WatchGuard is, it was bought out by...
Motorola, maybe it was?
I think it was, yeah, Motorola or Axon, one of those.
Okay. And then, can you explain how the process go in actually leasing the video? Because not just anybody can request it, and I believe it, it can't be released until the investigation's over or Judge orders it, right? So I mean, are we theoretically gonna have that much, gonna have to be, editing that much video?
No, it would still be a public record, so anybody can request them, they have to, they'd have to pay the fee, whatever that would be, to be able to have that. The only ones that are closed, and it wouldn't necessarily be judicial, it would be, once the judicial process is over, in terms of the criminal, open criminal investigation. So if we have an open, active criminal investigation, until that has gone through that judicial process, that's a matter of closed record. There's often, obviously, under the sunshine law, there are certain things that, that can be released at certain periods and points, but as far as just all-body camera footage, doesn't take a judicial order to, to release as far as public record, it's subject to open records requests like anything else, they just have to pay the fee.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, thank you. So earlier you were saying there's a big difference between lease and purchasing, so I'm assuming that with, with leasing, that they will be responsible for any damage replacement for anything that goes awry or is break within whatever usage, then owning, we would be responsible for all of that, is that the big, big difference there?
Correct. And, and I would assume that there probably is some sort of, with the lease, just like a car, I would think you would have to, we'll still be on the hook if we were negligent in somehow damaging some of that equipment, but as far as, the, the big difference, obviously, between owning and leasing, just like a car, one, you own it at the end, and we have that value that we can either trade off or trade in potentially to replace, as, and leverage that towards a replacement program versus a lease, we do not. We don't own any of that equipment at the end of that, we either renew that lease with that vendor, or if we were going to go to another vendor, we would start back over again.
It would be a fresh start over, I mean, we'd have to do the whole, whole nine.
Correct.
So with, if we did own, and then wanna trade out and move those cameras, is there any resale value or trade value to those?
It depends, it depends on if we stay with the same vendor, or if we go with a new vendor. Chances are, when we, when we trade out our firearms, oftentimes, we can, they can buy those back, because they can resell them. It's gonna depend on whether or not we can leverage those, if there's still usable life left in those, those cameras that we do own, for them to be able to sell to another department or another agency to, to get on board, or whether they'll just give us a credit for the equipment, because they feel like they can, they can get that. I don't know how prevalent that is, but that would definitely be a question that needs to come out of that, that process.
Then with, with our current sworn officers, and with our potential having more, what would the magic number be? Would it be 150 cameras, because not every camera's gonna be used every day type of thing, so is there a magic number that would make more sense than others?
I think you're probably right on, Councilman, as far as 150, 150 to 180, you have, you have some that will, out of, you know, we're, we're targeting sworn at 230. Obviously detectives don't need that necessarily every day, that, you know, when they're not engaged in fieldwork, administrative staff don't need those every day. So, you know, somewhere in the 150 to 180, which would give us a, a bank of some, probably to, to have on hand, but again, you're still gonna have to have a checkout system. One of the, one of the other implications that we've had, and one of the factors to consider, would be off-duty officers that are gonna have to come in before they go work a shift, they may not have a car, so if we do the car model that's there, they may not have a car with them, so we're gonna have to have those that are capable with either SIM card or some other way to be able to download that footage.
You just said something that kind of stirred, I thought in my head, so some of our command staff who are out in the, in the field and, and doing community work and, and other things like that are dressed as officers. So if they were to get into a situation where they don't have a body camera, then future or later, we needed that body camera footage, or was required to have that, or not required, but was asked for that footage and they don't have it, why does the command staff don't have it when our patrol officers do have it? I mean, does that get into some muddy communication problems with, with the public?
I think if they were gonna engage in, in fieldwork, it'd be like anything else, that, that they would go through a checkout system, just like we have now. If we have command staff that go in and, and perform a, an enforcement function, whether that be a traffic grant or some, some other mechanism, they can't use their car that doesn't have a, a in-car dash cam, they have to use the, the enforcement vehicle that's set up with a, with the technology to, to record.
That's all I have, if anything else comes up, I'll definitely reach out.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments or questions from the council? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Okay, this takes us to our staff reports, our first is the City Charter Review Committee overview, Mr. Same Manager.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I'll be giving this presentation in 45 seconds or so.
Okay.
Okay, again, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Zach Walker, City Manager. Last week, at your council meeting, you had first reading of an ordinance that would form a charter review commission for the City of Independence. Second reading is slated to occur next week, and in the interim here, we were asked to provide a little bit more information about this. If this sounds familiar to you in any way, I have given this presentation in May of 2018, and again, in February of 2020, so we're on a every-two-year cycle where we give this, and maybe third time will be a charm for getting this through. Tonight, I am going to talk about why we believe it's important to review our city charter, the process for getting that done, and then seeking your direction as you deliberate this into the future for the next steps. Our city charter is derived from the Missouri State Constitution, which allows us to have a home-rule charter here in the City of Independence. That was voted on and approved by our citizens initially back in 1961, that is the foundational governing document for our city. I will mention to you that in the original charter commission objective, the purpose for that document was noted as being necessary to ensure a high level of competence, efficiency, and responsiveness to the wishes of the electorate and the city government of Independence. When a charter amendment advisory board was formed several years later, which we'll speak about in a moment, they took that a step further by saying the purpose was to affirm the basic appropriateness of the original charter, while expanding upon it and modernizing the terminology. I, I highlighted and underlined that, expanding and modernizing the terminology, because the last several years, each of those years when the council has had their annual strategic planning session, modernizing the organization, making a more efficient and responsive government, is always noted as a desire of the council, and I think in order to fully do that, having a charter that delivers upon that is important. So very quickly, just a review of, of where the city has been with its charter. In, as I mentioned, in April of 1961, the citizens elected a charter commission to draft the city charter, and that was a 13-member commission. On December 5th, 1961, the citizens of Independence approved a charter establishing the council-manager form of government. As a result of an initiative petition drive, the citizens of Independence approved an amendment in April 1972 to institute primary elections before the April council elections. In August of 1978, the citizens approved a general revision to the city charter that was the result of work done by the council-appointed charter amendment advisory board that I mentioned a moment ago. Other minor amendments occurred over the year... Other amendments occurred over the years since that time, including August of 1985. I will speak to that 1996 provision a little bit more later on, but you can see that didn't go so well, and we'll talk about why in a moment. There were charter elections in May of 87, April of 99, November of '02. The 87 ballot proposal changed the timing and process for filing for council election. The 99 ballot proposal changed the charter requirements for the Health Director, and the 2002 ballot proposal updated the process for weed and nuisance abatement. To the best of my knowledge, each of those were proposed by the council without a Charter Commission and done to address very specific and current issues at that time. I will mention to you as well, in addition to the fact, as I said earlier, we've talked about this on a seemingly biannual basis, this has now been incorporated into the Independence Chamber of Commerce's work plan for this year, 2022. Their initial petition was signed by over 75 of their members, so those aren't necessarily individuals, but member organizations and businesses of the chamber. So talk a little bit about why it is important to review the city charter. This charter has served its city very well over the years, but it certainly has its limitations. From my perspective, as your city manager, it makes it very difficult to drive the changes that are necessary to meet that mandate, providing a more efficient, adequate, and economical government. That's a charge I take very seriously, but it is sometimes very difficult to meet within the restrictions and scope of that charter. What I mean specifically by that, I'll talk about a little bit in a moment, but, you know, the charter mentions very specific departments and positions, instead of giving more general functionality that we should be delivering upon. It is very hard to innovate in that kind of environment. Beyond just those challenges, it's been many years since we had our last citizens' commission. That was 1985, the last time a citizens' commission came together to review our charter, which means many of the references in there are dated, or have been stricken by case law, or there are functions the city has now absorbed that are not specifically mentioned in the charter. And again, I will continue to stress to you that providing for the more efficient, adequate, and economical government is difficult within the provisions that we currently face. This is a chart that we included in our last two presentations, so I confess I did not go check to update this. So this is current as of 2020, but you can see that the last time, you know, whether it was a citizens' commission or a very specific issue brought forward, that some of our peer cities around the metropolitan area have last touched their charter. That '02 provision, again, was the one where the council specifically put forward amendment to address weed and nuisance abatement issues. Most of these cities have a mandatory review provision in their charter, so even if they don't take an issue to the citizens to vote upon, somewhere between two and five years seems to be what is incorporated in their charters to form a citizens' commission and ask them to look and decide if anything should be proposed for consideration. I'm gonna transition now to just share some thoughts with you about what potentially should be reviewed. I would like to tell you that most of these are original ideas, but they are not. Attached to your agenda item tonight was a memo prepared in 1995, some 27 years ago, by then-city manager Larry Blick, that outlined the reason why Charter Review Commission would be appropriate and needed, and here we are, 27 years later, reviewing the same things. Before I get into some of those potential issues, just to give you a sense of how this could come together, you, as a council, could set a limited scope of review for your Charter Commission. You could limit the issues or the areas of the charter that you wanted the citizens' commission to review, and then they could bring forward a series of amendments for the voters to consider if they felt like that was appropriate, or you could have a wholesale review of your charter and contemplate adoption of an entirely new charter. In the present tense, I would recommend that you utilize the citizen review commission as has been outlined in the ordinance that was first read last week, and bring forward a series of individual amendments. That way, if there are provisions that citizens like, they could elect to choose those while disregarding and voting down ones that they may not feel are in the best interest of the city at this time. Whereas if you do a wholesale approach, you could risk, you know, having everything flunked if there was one or two issues that were not appetizing. Okay, so a couple just specific, these are, again, some of our ideas as staff, as well as our predecessors from 27 years ago, but this particular slide talks about making a mandatory Charter Review Provision added to Article 15 of your charter. Article 15 speaks to the issue of how a charter is amended or adopted. Adding language, again, that would make a mandatory review a requirement, would be appropriate in our opinion as city staff. As I mentioned, it's commonplace in most city charters for other cities, and it ensures that your citizens have the opportunity to review their charter on a regular and routine basis and decide if they wish to consider any changes. Again, kind of based on a review of other cities, we think at least five years would be appropriate. That way, you're not, you know, coming together too frequently, but you are coming together often enough to try to keep current with technology, as well as public opinion and public perception. On this slide, we talk about a couple of procedural changes. 11.6 speaks to public improvements. This section of the charter requires a contractor to bond for any project over $2,500. That is a woefully low threshold and discourages participation in the public procurement process, particularly among smaller and minority-owned businesses who, you know, don't feel it's worth their time to go out and bond for such a low-dollar project. Article 7 speaks to the initiative referendum and recall process. I want to be very clear here, we are not suggesting elimination of that process. I think that's an important tool for the citizens of the city, but what we're talking about is better aligning the timelines that are laid out in the charter. Those right now are incongruent with what is allowed by the Jackson County Board of Elections, so this would be a cleanup provision. Right now, it requires an election be held between 30 and 90 days after receiving notice of an initiative or referendum notice. This would clean that up and better align with the county's Board of Elections. Public utilities, this seems to be an issue of contentious debate in the community and certainly in the organization. There is often a lack of clarity around what Section 3.17 says. I have had the privilege of visiting with many brilliant, bright, and reasonable minds, but those minds tend to disagree on how best to apply this section of the charter. Specifically, this section speaks of running the electric utility in a business-like fashion. How one business owner chooses to run their business may be different than another business owner. Adding more specificity about how all of that were to function would probably bring better clarity and less contentious debate around that issue. Beyond that, since the time the charter was adopted, the city has acquired a water and sewer utility. Both of those function as separate utilities. However, 3.17 is specific to the electric utility, and moreover, changes in the GFOA and GASB municipal finance standards and practices have led to an evolution in the relationship between municipal utilities and cities. So as a result of changes in accounting standards, as a result of different litigation that has happened around this section over the years, the acquiring and establishment of two new utilities, we believe that there's sufficient need to have a revision and clarification of this section. The Personnel Board, I suggest looking at Section 3.29. The law has evolved greatly since 1961 around issues of personnel. Reviewing that enlivened the changes to the law to ensure that we, as a city, remain in compliance is advisable, and in addition to that, reviewing the powers and duties of the Personnel Board relative to its relationship to the city manager seems appropriate. Currently, many of our city attorneys have interpreted the charter to mean that the Personnel Board acts in an advisory role to the city manager, but frankly, the language is not clear on this issue, and we've gotten questions about that over the year. So bringing better clarity to that would be helpful as well. Political activities, we could certainly say a lot on this, but I know the hour grows late, so let me try to summarize this briefly. I mentioned to you in 1996, a provision was brought forward that was resoundingly defeated, 13,858 votes against to 5,512 votes in favor. This provision was brought in 1996 was to strike Section 5.4 and get rid of the charter's prohibitions on political activities by city employees, and as you can see, that was resoundingly rejected by the voters in Independence. Interestingly enough, there were two other elections before that, which were affirmatively approving those restrictions, and those were overwhelmingly approved by the voters. So three times, this kind of came up and was pretty much made clear by the voters how they felt. In 1996, though, litigation was brought forward by one of the city's collective bargaining agreements, and the Jackson County Circuit Court Judge John Andrews ruled that Section 5.4 was unconstitutional. Going back and doing a little historical research, the city appealed this decision to the Missouri Court of Appeals, but the city did not properly file its appeal and was not granted standing before the court at that time. So the Court of Appeals has never taken up the issue of whether 5.4 is constitutional or not. It just was shot down based on improper filing. So that said, one way or another, this issue needs to be dealt with by the community. One option would be to delete it out altogether, but probably better, based on those three votes of the past that I mentioned, I think trying to craft language that passes constitutional muster and is in line with the underpinnings of the city charter is probably something that should be weighed and vetted out. Administrative departments, this gets to the point of the efficient administration of the city. I've said a lot about this. Having the flexibility to try to align our responsiveness of our departments in line with the council's wishes and the community's desires would be advantageous for us. That would make us more efficient, more economical, more responsive, but oftentimes we are hamstrung by the very specific language of the charter. Those functions are very important, but how we deliver upon them, having greater ability to respond to that would be helpful. So some of the clarity around all of the departments listed out in Article 3 would be an appropriate discussion. So those are some of the ideas. I just want to quickly mention that there's an organization out there, the National Civic League, since 1900, they have put out a model city charter. Earlier, well, late last year, November of '21, they issued the ninth revision to the model city charter. The reasoning primarily behind that was to bring heightened attention to the role of public engagement, as well as improved commitments in charters to the issues of equity and inclusion. So just want to point out that there is now a new model city charter out there, so the city take this issue up, along which our Charter Review Board could work off of. So in summary, if for no other reason, our charter should be reviewed to consider addressing the conflicting, cumbersome, and outdated provisions that have risen from the years of not having the Citizens Review Commission. We believe that addressing some of these conflicting, confusing, and outdated issues will help make the city more responsive to the council's goal of being a progressive, modern, 21st-century community, and will also allow our citizens the right to review their charter and make sure their government is functioning in the way that they would like to see. So next week, you'll take this issue up. Were that to pass, that's when the council would need to start figuring out who these individuals are that would serve on this Charter Commission, forming the scope of work, as well as a deadline to complete, and then we would want to work with the council to figure out the balance between professional help, as well as supplementing that commission with some city staff support. We look forward to helping the council in your deliberations about this, and are happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walker. Before we get into discussion, I just want to very briefly review the ordinance that was read last week, which will potentially have a second reading next week, to establish the Charter Amendment Advisory Board. As we've all heard over the course of the last several years, and frankly, over many years, is there's a lot of steps to the process, but the first step is for the council to establish the advisory board to review the council before anything is done, to say what they would look, what the commission would look at, and certainly bringing any recommendations back to the council to put before the voters. So what is being proposed, and as we all know, I placed this on the agenda, but it was not without considerable conversations over many years with many people in our community, with our employees, and specifically this year with the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce, when they set their legislative priorities, very few things are directed at the city. There are primarily state and federal legislative priorities, and occasionally, there's one or two that have to do with the city, and specifically this year, this was certainly one of them, so I've been working closely with the Chamber of Commerce. I serve on their Public Policy Committee, and we talk about this fairly frequently, about what are, how do we take this initial step? So what is being suggested is that we establish a Charter Amendment Advisory Board of nine members appointed by the city council. There's some language, just about quorum, and how those individuals would be potentially selected or removed after they're selected. Section 4 talks about how this nine-person committee would function, that they would meet at least monthly, that they would request the city manager to provide qualified staff personnel assistance, as city manager said, if it ever needs such services, to study the charter, conduct hearings, and make written recommendations to the city council by June 1 of 2023, which would give them that commission, if it were approved next week, well over a year, to conduct their business, which is very similar to what we did with the Downtown Redevelopment Coordinating Committee. It's a large task and very detailed, and I, you know, feel that we need to allow for ample time, you know, keep a record of minutes of all of their activities, and specifically to hold and conduct meetings to enlist the cooperation of all groups, so that being said, that there be a high level of public engagement in the process before any recommendation would come back to the council. It's not presumed that the recommendation would be to change the charter, or to put something on the ballot. It's simply to begin the process of appointing a citizens' committee to review the charter as directed by the city council, whether that's in part or in whole. as directed by the city council, whether that's in part or in whole. So with that said, I will open it up to the council for discussion.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I think, Zach, you said there was a previous city or charter review committee in nineteen eighty-five, is that what?
Yes.
Okay. How many, how many members were on that?
Let me get back to you on that to, to confirm that.
So I guess my second question is, where, where did the nine members come from?
Um, it's a big job. I, typically, our commissions, our oversight committees, those types of things, have seven members. Often, those are individually appointed by council members, as we all know. It requires four members to be present for a quorum. A nine-member council requires five members to be present, present, which I did notice that there was an error in the, in the ordinance that we need to correct that. When, in my recollection, when we've done special task, citizen task forces, there've typically been more than seven members. I think, I don't remember how many were on the DRCC. I know Public Safety Task Force that I served on many years ago, I believe there were nine members. It just seems like to get the breadth of knowledge and civic and citizen engagement that we might potentially want for this kind of an undertaking, you know, just try to hit that sweet spot where you have enough input, but not so much where the committee becomes so large that it becomes unmanageable. So there's nothing magic about the nine members. I just, in the discussions that I've had over many years, it doesn't seem like seven, this is a big job for seven people, and a thirteen-member committee gets to be difficult because then you need, what, seven people for a quorum, and sometimes that slows down, slows things down.
Sorry. I don't agree, disagree with what you said. I just, I guess in the interest of fairness, I mean, there are seven members on this city council, you know, so if each of us got to appoint one member, you know, then where would the other two members come from?
So how it's worked in the past is if the council determines that it wants to do individual appointments, there would be seven individual appointments and two members who are, would be at-large or selected by the entire, by the entire council, or in the case of the Downtown Redevelopment Coordinating Committee, all members were selected by the entirety of the council. There were applications taken, and a subcommittee of the council conducted interviews and made recommendations, and then each member was elected by the entire council. So there's a variety of ways to do that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? Is anybody online? We've lost them. Okay. Okay. Okay, if there's no other discussion, we will move on to our boards and commissions report. Madam City Clerk.
First board is the Brandon Independence Committee. We're looking for a recommendation to reappoint Meredith Rose, which is an at-large position, and also reappoint Quentin Templeton, which is an individual appointment for council member Stuart.
Okay. Are there any objections to moving this forward to the next council agenda? Okay. None?
Next is the Independent Squared Advisory Board. Recommendations been made to appoint Brandy Spearman. If there's no objections, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Are there any objections? Okay, hearing none, we'll add that to the next agenda.
Next is the Industrial Development Authority. If there's no objections, we'll add a resolution to appoint Alex Gonzalez.
Are there any objections? Okay, you can add that to the next agenda.
And finally, Jackson County Board of Equalization. Recommendations been made to appoint Karen Mel. If there's no objections, we'll add a resolution to the next agenda.
Are there any objections? Okay. That concludes your report, I believe.
It does. We do have several individual council appointments. We'll just need to start making some movement there.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any other discussion topics a council member wants to bring forward this evening? Mr. City Manager, anything else this evening?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
We're adjourned.